Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Meeting. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cobb, would you do the honors tonight? And I see Chief White.
I want to say a special one for Chief White. He's not feeling well tonight, so couldn't be with us. If you'd like to join us in prayer, you may do so now. Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for blessing this community and all that you have through the years. But, Father, we come to you today in pain. Our nation mourns the deaths that occurred over the weekend with the mass shooting. We pray that you will be with that community, Lord, and all that are involved. Bless all the families. Bring them peace and comfort, Lord. Let them know that you're there for them. And be with our family too, Lord, as we have here, people here that are hurting as well. We ask that you bless this meeting and that you send us home safely to our families. In your name, amen.
Thank you, Brian. This time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's about 6:31 PM. We have all members of council present. First item of business that we have is the approval of the minutes for October 16th, 2017. I'd like to entertain a motion. Do so.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
No, sir. Looks good.
Bob?
Looks good.
Anything?
Good.
Hearing none called to vote, all in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on, we're up to public comments. First request I have is Mary Ann O'Brien.
Hello. My name is Mary Ann O'Brien. I reside at 1013 Willa Lake Circle in Oviedo. I've been a resident and taxpayer of the city since 1997. Business owner locally of a real estate brokerage, Save More Real Estate, and I'm also a UCF and Rollins College alumni. My question is for the city council members and for the mayor of Oviedo. This is addressed to the city elected officials, and I do thank you in advance for my time to speak today. My question is for the city. It simply, are you the mayor of Oviedo or are you a full-time real estate agent? Help me to understand your position. When you were appointed to the mayor on August 2nd, 2010, after the former mayor, Mary Lou Andrews resigned, you stated you were a business owner and a real estate investor. Chapter 112 of the 2017 Florida Statute states that you were a business owner and real estate investor. The public officials are to be independent and impartial to the public office and not provide any private gain. Your position as mayor of the Oviedo appears to be a huge conflict of interest to the residents of the city of Oviedo. There is a code of ethics setting forth, standards of misconduct. I believe you can serve on other government boards, commissions, and committees, but not on private corporations, hospitals, or profitable businesses like a real estate agent's, representing the general public day-to-day in the sale and purchase of real estate. I believe you would have an unfair advantage in this situation. Your current office of mayor has allowed you to conduct business over the past—
Excuse me. Does that go for the councilwoman also? I'm just curious.
Yes.
Because it's too real.
Yes, it does.
Okay, then you can use councilwoman and mayor in your addressing.
I did that. Council—
You need to address the board, not me directly.
City council members and for the mayor. I wanted to include you. I started off by saying that.
But you continued on with just me.
Sorry. Your current office of mayor and city council has allowed you to conduct business over the past seven years in current and future knowledge of land sales with developers, builders, and the private sector.
Okay, excuse me. Mr. Groot, I'm going to call point of order here because this is an attack on two council members that I think they're just making accusations. So I'm going to ask that this be taken up in another forum. You're attacking two people here—
I'm not attacking. I'm stating a statute of the state of Florida.
Okay, you can make general comments, but you're attacking two people up here that I can tell you are very honorable people, and I don't appreciate it.
Well, can I ask, can I ask the lady a question?
Yes.
And I typically don't get involved, but if there has been a point of order raised, are you alleging a violation of the Code of Ethics?
Yes, I am.
Then, ma'am, you, this is the wrong place to do that.
Well—
You need to, you need to go to the Florida Commission on Ethics and file your complaint and run the risk that you may have filed a frivolous complaint. Because I'm going to tell you that if you excluded every Realtor that serves on the 67 county commissions and the over 400 city commissions and councils in this state, there would be a lot of people not serving. Now, if there's alleged allegations of individual acts of corruption, that's where you go to the Florida Commission on Ethics.
I'm stating a general violation of the statute.
There is no such thing as a general violation.
Well, I have a copy of the statute here if you would like to see it.
Whether you're a lawyer—
No, I'm not a lawyer. I'm a licensed real estate broker.
Ma'am, could you listen to me for just one moment?
I am listening.
Whether you're a lawyer, a Realtor, or an Indian chief, okay, you have the right to serve on a council. You don't have the right to act corruptly. But the mere fact that you're a Realtor does not make you a corrupt person. And if your allegation is that somebody is a corrupt person who's done corrupt acts, this is not the right place. Go file a complaint with the Florida Commission on Ethics. But I warn you that there's potential viability on your part should you file a complaint which is frivolous or has no basis in fact.
I'm not filing a complaint. I'm here to speak my mind.
Well, ma'am, I'm sorry, but it sounds like you're making allegations, but—
Can I finish?
That's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you for your comments. The next public request that I have is from Donna B. Benson.
I defer my—
Well, we can't defer the minutes, but if you'd rather not speak, that's no problem. Mr. Kamik, you have three minutes.
No, sir. Ms. Benson is giving me her three minutes to talk so I can present my statement.
Mr. Kamik, you have—
Mr. Mayor.
You have three minutes. That's what you have. So if Mrs. Benson would like to take her three minutes, she may, or you have three.
Last time we were here, she was deferred her minutes to me, and there's absolutely no problem. Now, there appears to be a problem with this council in previous protocol when I spoke before, so I don't understand that, Mr. Mayor. What's the problem?
Go ahead, Mr. Kamik.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. It is public comment section. This may be in line, Mr. Groot, with the previous speaker, but it is public comment, and I'm going to get this out, okay? On October 25th, 2017, at approximately 10:00 AM, I, Ms. Mary Ann O'Brien, owner of Save More Real Estate here in Oviedo, went to the Oviedo Medical Center to inquire about being placed on the hospital's approved vendor list. Ms. O'Brien is a licensed real estate broker, and I'm a licensed mortgage loan originator. We met with Ms. Drake, oh, excuse me, Ms. Droke regarding this matter in the hospital's lobby. When I stated why we were there, Ms. Droke's response was, "It's against hospital policy to have such a list." I questioned her further and asked, "What information do you provide to your doctors and nurses when they relocate from other areas to assist them in getting settled?" She stated, "These relocation referrals are handled directly by our board." This conversation was witnessed by Ms. O'Brien. This statement seemed very odd due to the fact, in 26 years of doing mortgages, this relocation approved vendor list has always been handled by the HR departments, not the board. The board meets once a month or once a quarter, so why would this be taken on by the board when the approved vendor list is a daily component of HR? My research shows that our mayor, Mr. Persantia, is on the hospital board. Found this information in the Oviedo Medical Center website. I also deduced from the list of board members, Mr. Persantia is the only actively licensed Realtor on the board by running all the board members' names against the Florida DDPR website. Ms. Droke's comments were, "The hospital's relocation referrals are handled directly by the board, and it is against hospital policy to have this referral list." Thus, since there is no list for Ms. Droke and Mr. Persantia is the only actively licensed Realtor on the board, it is a logical deduction, Mr. Persantia receives these real estate referral leads as a board member. I'm concerned that on September 7th, 17 days after successfully lobbying for and voting for the Oviedo Medical Center Advolum Tax Exemption Extension, Mr. Persantia received a campaign donation of $1,000 from HCA Good Government PAC located in Tallahassee, Florida. As well as on September 20th, 29 days after he lobbied for and voted for the hospital tax break, our deputy mayor, Mr. Steve Henkin, also received a campaign donation of $1,000 from the same PAC, per campaign fund records found on voteseminal.org. I did some research and found the HCA Good Government PAC is located at the same property address as the HCA headquarters, which is 101 North Monroe Street, 801, excuse me, Street, uh, Suite 801, Tallahassee, Florida. The Oviedo Medical Center is listed as a hospital member under the HCA North Forward Network on its website. I want to make it perfectly clear, perfectly clear, I am not accusing anyone of any wrongdoing. I'm only bringing to light my opinion of perceived improprieties I recently encountered and thus want looked into. All statements above were obtained from either hard copy documentation, witness of a verbal conversation, a systematic logical progression of scenarios, public websites, or comments noted as my opinion. Since Councilwoman Megan Sladek and I have worked closely on several previous items regarding my area of town, I would ask Ms. Sladek during this council meeting to please make a motion as the State Attorney General's Office contacted and asked for an independent investigation into the following matters. If Mr. Persantia receives hospital relocation referral leads due to his position on the board, is he then considered being compensated by the hospital by referring their employees' real estate needs to him? Two, if compensation is established in this matter, is Mr. Persantia's argument for the Oviedo Medical Center's five-year Advolum Tax Exemption Restructuring, thus affecting tax liabilities, estimated $481,000 for five years per David Johnson Seminole County Property Appraiser Report, February 3rd, 2015? Would this be considered a conflict of interest violation in that he's receiving compensation from the Oviedo Medical Center in the form of relocation and real estate referral business and then successfully argued for and voted for the Advolum Tax Reduction Extension for a medical center? With both Mr. Henkin and Mr. Persantia successfully lobbying for on the 21st, for and voting for the Advolum Tax Exemption Extension for the Oviedo Medical Center, were the campaign donations received from the HCA Good Government PAC appropriate in nature, especially since they were received so soon after the vote to extend the Oviedo Medical Center's tax reduction liabilities, or were they possibly a quid pro quo for delivering on the Advolum Tax Extension Request to the Oviedo Medical Center, which is a member of the HCA network? Note, the other political candidates in my research did not receive any campaign contributions from the HCA Good Government PAC, as there were no entries on their campaign contribution report.
Mr. Kamik, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, you may.
And I'm not going to get into a debate here.
No, he's going to sit down. This is just campaign rhetoric. That's all this is.
Many jurisdictions—
Uh, you will not be recognized. If you go to that microphone, you will be removed.
Don't make that statement. You can't back that up. You can't back that up.
I just—
You don't, you can't back it up.
Many jurisdictions—
Yeah, export them out, please.
Many jurisdictions have policies against electioneering comments and allegations against members of governing bodies for just that reason. Just for the record, because it's sort of my job, although I'm not the inspector general. Nothing that was said there rises to any level of any type of ethical violation as a member of the city council. People can go make their complaints at the Ethics Commission, like I said before, but nothing that was said rises anywhere to that level, Mr. Mayor. I understand that you are not paid to be on the board, that the votes you take did not annear to your financial benefit, and there was no violation. We've been through this. You asked the question, as I recall, months ago. So this is no, no news, because you asked the question and you were cleared. I hope that's—
Mr. Groot, can you please let the public know that any time I think that there may be something, do I not contact your office?
You absolutely do, sir.
Okay. Do you give me the proper advice each and every time?
I sure think I do.
Thank you.
You know what? I have to tell you something, you know? I always say, and I agree with the mayor's statement, you know, it's, uh, it's the end of a campaign, and tomorrow, you know, I always say the masses will get it right, and they will get it right. And, you know, if you want to talk about violations, there have been many along the way, none made by him or I, okay? So I'll just leave it at that, and tomorrow you put your faith in, in the voters, and they will get it right, I have no doubt, so, um—
It's just a shame that our opponents think that this is how they win an election.
Yeah, well, tomorrow, we'll see how that works out.
All right, we're moving on. Anybody else? Anyone else want to dare come up? Okay. Moving along. Next item up on the agenda is our consent agenda, and that is item four through eight. What is the pleasure of council? Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve it as presented. Second, motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none called to vote, all in favor of the motion—
I do have discussion, if we could. I just wanted to point out on one of these, the shops at Sterling Creek, it's a replat. And for people who aren't familiar with that, that was not adding a lot or changing the development intensity there. Just want to make sure anybody from my vote who may be wondering, are we doing any kind of shenanigans? No, we're not. They just moved where the lots were, and the square footage is governed by a developer's agreement that was in place all along. So nothing has changed with intensity on that one. That's, just wanted to make sure that was out there.
That's a great point.
Oh, and also, thank you to everybody on staff. I know you guys don't get to see all the stuff going back and forth, but there are mountains of emails answering all my budget questions, so thank you to everybody who chimed in on that. And the other things.
Great. Any other questions? Hearing none called to vote, all in favor of the motion to adopt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Let's see. We are going to move up to item number, first reading of ordinance is we have none, no resolutions. We do have one ordinance. It is ordinance number 1660. Mr. Groot, can you read that by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In order to the city of Oviedo, Florida relating to the Public Arts Board, amending Section 2 of Ordinance Number 1653 relating to board membership, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for implemented administrative actions, providing for a savings provision, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, as well as correction of scrutiny errors, providing for separability, and providing for ineffective data. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the council to amend Section 2 of Ordinance Number 1653, and it's primarily regarding the membership of the Public Arts Board. At your first reading on October 2nd, you asked the staff to make some insignificant revisions to change the makeup of the board from seven members to a maximum of nine, to remove the city council expat member, and then also to allow a member to be from the Seminole County Cultural Arts Board. This ordinance does accomplish all those things. It's recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 1660.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. This time, I'll open up the public hearing on ordinance number 1660. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1660.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion?
No, sir. Looks great.
Councilmember?
Good.
To the right.
Do we need to make sure that we include that we are adopting it as amended in the motion?
I think the, um, since the language you requested is already in the ordinance—
Okay, we're good.
We've already made the revision.
Okay, just making sure.
I think we're fine.
So the, the ordinance that you're enacting is the one as presented in your agenda, Peter.
Perfect.
Councilmember Pollak?
I'm good.
All righty. Hearing and seeing none, uh, no further discussion. I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Moving along, we're up to a discussion item. This was asked for by Councilman Britton. So why don't I just turn it over to Councilman Britton, see what he's got in mind, and see if the council agrees.
Okay. What I wanted to discuss is, is the consensus of forming a senior citizens, I guess that's a still a word I can use, Senior Citizens Programming Committee. Um, I've spoken to Brian about this, and what I had in mind was something in the lines of, along the lines of what we did with the ION program, where we went into a neighborhood, identified some community leaders, and asked them what, what they thought they needed and what their priorities were versus us trying to guess what they were and making that assumption. In the ION program, they came back with a list of, of issues and priorities. We developed a plan, and then we started working on implementing it. Uh, the good thing about that was that once we had a plan, funding from other sources became available. And, and that's one thing I want to make sure on this, is that we, when we start out, I don't want to make this a, a city-funded effort. I'd like to make it a community effort, and once we develop the plan, we can see where that goes. But I'm more interested on what types of programs seniors are looking for. I know Bill Hyde has mentioned this to me quite a bit. A fellow named Tim Matthews, who goes to our church, works with the UCF Life Program, and I forget what that means. Learning Institute for Elders, I think is what that means. And, uh, those are the types of things I want to see that we have available, that we can make available, either through education and awareness to senior citizens, or if there's other things that we might be doing. And it's high time we quit, you know, giving lip service to this and started doing something about it. And so that's really all I wanted to do, is get the consensus from council to maybe start working with Brian to come up with that and, and maybe seek out some citizens to, to help us work on, on a plan.
Great. Sounds good to me. Right?
Does it involve any staff time, or is this just everybody kind of get together and talks?
It might involve some staff time, but not, not anything onerous.
And we don't need to have an attorney there at the same time, you don't think? Okay.
We didn't, we didn't with ION. We just got some community leaders together and said, "What do you want? Let's, let's work on something."
Great. Bob?
I think it's a great program. I think that we, we should also integrate in this program a, a facility, whether it be, um, you know, as, as had been discussed in the past, the old post office or another facility, but I think it's definitely needed in our community.
Yeah. And that's— Would that be part of the scope?
That's something we could, you know, I, I'm thinking, if we don't have a specific facility, maybe we can decentralize it and, and offer the programs throughout the city at different facilities. Maybe at, at Seminole State, they may have buildings. We may have room at Riverside. We may have room at the golf course. You know, it depends on what, what they come up with, on what they want to do.
Perfect.
All righty. So you'll put the scope of this together with the city staff, like with ION, bring it back so we can see what we're doing in the—
Yeah, and I think I'll—
Because then we have to appoint them.
I'm going to survey some of the folks that have been coming to me and see, see if we can get together, maybe sit down at a, at the townhouse or something and start collecting these ideas, and then we'll see how it goes from there.
So should we send everybody your way? I know three or four people who'd be really interested.
Send them my way. Send them my way. They got my number.
Grab consensus.
Tell them to email me, because I answer emails.
We have consensus, I'm assuming. It seems that way.
Yes, sir.
Megan?
Yep.
All righty. You got it, Keith.
All right.
Mr. Cobb, you got it?
Thank you, Mayor. We have, just have one thing. We've had an opportunity coming before us to expand our social media program, and I'd like to have Mr. Kelly come up and tell you about it. Our policy says that we need to get your okay before we can move forward, and so we wanted to see if we have council consensus to move forward with this new program.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm coming before you today to talk about the Nextdoor social media website. I don't know if you're all familiar with it, but it creates a similar Facebook-style site which is divided up into neighborhoods. Each neighborhood has sort of like a bulletin board of citizens that can post on there if they would like to sell an item, or they need a recommendation on a handyman or babysitter or something like that. So what staff needs is your okay to go forth with using Nextdoor as a public agency to promote city events, city services, et cetera, like that, so—
Keith, you okay?
I'm okay.
Yes, sir. It was good.
How do you— I just have a question, because, because I've tried using Nextdoor and—
It's a little different, yes.
It's very cumbersome. How are you going to get into every, are you able to get into all the neighborhoods?
Yes, Nextdoor sets up a city account so that you can see within the city limits every neighborhood. You don't necessarily, you don't see the conversations that are happening, but we can push information to them.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm good.
Looks like you have consensus.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Cobb?
I know, Mayor. That is it.
Mr. Groot?
Nothing to see there, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Councilwoman Sladek, you are up.
We are so close on getting all the debris, but my sixth grader has requested that some of it is, some of it be removed on 426 near Celery Circle, so whoever's heading that up, if that could disappear, they are walking their bikes around this stuff. Also, just wanted to speak up and say, I am a Realtor. I'm an attorney. I did not know that any public comments were coming or that I would be called upon to take any particular action. At this time, my, my opinion is, is what Mr. Groot's is, that, you know, things may look a certain way from the outside, but the best of my knowledge, unless there's some specific incident that people are aware of, I am not interested in, you know, pursuing anything with the Attorney General. I do have a question, though, for, I guess it's city staff, on the use of the city seal by individual council members without consensus of everybody, and that would be specifically in regards to the Nextdoor neighbor thing, which I totally forgot about till right now, because I noticed you set one up as the office of the mayor, as an agency—
I set it up. That's the one that I turned over to staff.
Okay, so that's going over there. Okay. Because that seems like a, a good spot to go. Maybe you can chime in a little bit more on, on how that went down.
When I get to my report, I'll tell you how it's happened.
Okay, cool.
Four candidates with the city seal.
No, 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 it, it's the Nextdoor account. I'll take care of it.
Yeah, but I would, I would just want to make sure that everybody out there knows that we're, nobody is supposed to be using the city seal. I've seen Realtors use it, not me, you know, in direct mail, where you're really not supposed to just grab the city seal and slap it on the stuff.
There's a lot of folks who grab the city seal.
Yeah, and there's really no way to police that, and I don't think anybody's going to come after you. But as, as you're talking to people, please just let them know that that is an official kind of a thing, like, you know, like the King's seal or whatever, back in the olden days, the city seal should, should be something significant, and try to respect it. That's it for me.
Councilman Britton?
I just want to wish my colleagues up here and, and all the candidates best of luck tomorrow, and may the best candidate win, and we'll be seeing you here in a couple weeks, whoever that may be. I think it's been a relatively quiet campaign, and that's appreciated. I think Chris Carver, he said something in the paper Sunday that we've had a pretty good campaign and other cities haven't, so that's, that's commendable for us. That's all I have.
Let me answer the Nextdoor. During Hurricane Irma, it was suggested to us that we push out information on Nextdoor
During Hurricane Irma, it was suggested to us that we push out information on Nextdoor, because as we know, I mean, we were very active on Facebook. Tracy and I were working together and getting all this information out to everybody. So I went to Nextdoor to try to set up a personal account, like Bob just mentioned, and it's very confusing. You can't have a personal, public agency, Nextdoor account. They just don't allow you to do that. You have to have a Nextdoor account with your Nextdoor neighbors. So like Chapman Groves, where we are, my personal account goes Chapman Groves, Stillwater, Alafaya, the neighborhoods around me. So I made the application into them for it, and they came back and they said, "We can't set it up that way. We have to set it up as public agency." I said, "Okay, whatever, you can do that." A week ago, they finally got back to me after a month or five weeks of, "Hey, your public agency's approved." So that's when I set it up, and I immediately made Patrick and Tracy the admins of the account. So I just turned it over to them, is what I did. Then we found out that they couldn't post on it until they got the consensus of council, because that's the way the policy is. So that's how it all came about. That's why it's got the city seal, the picture. All the information that's on there is staff contact information now, actually, because staff took it over, so it's going to be theirs, and it's just going to be to push out information. Past that, that's all I got. Councilman Pollak, you're up.
I just wanted to mention great days this weekend.
That's right.
So I think it opens at eight o'clock on Saturday morning?
Technically at nine.
Technically at nine, okay. All right, so that's this weekend. I don't think a whole lot's gone on last couple weeks, it's been pretty quiet. The election's tomorrow, so I hope everybody gets out and votes for the candidates that they think will do the best job in the next couple of years, so that's all I have.
Great. Stephanie, Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just a couple things. I'll just say in general, you know, I have run quite a few campaigns, and I've seen lots of stuff, and it really, really aggravates me that you realtors have to take such abuse. I mean, there are so many good realtors. I might add that the mayor's opponent is also a realtor, and I hear that she does a very good job at that, so, you know, just because you're a realtor, you know, sometimes you come across things, but I can tell you from sitting here, and anybody I ever sat with, I ever thought there was any impropriety, I would throw them under the bus myself. But these four, to my left, everybody I've ever sat up here with, I have never really noticed anybody ever have an ethical problem. Matter of fact, if things come our way, I do the same thing as, you know, most of us do. I call Mr. Groot for like every little thing to make sure that it's perfect, you know? This campaign, you know, it's kind of weird, you know? We have two opponents that don't really know us and have formed opinions. You know, when you get to know the mayor and I, you find out that it's not who you think we are. But I can tell you, I know this man for a long time, he knows me. You know, it's very hurtful what I hear up there, because I know the person outside of sitting here in the dais. I know this lady down here for fifteen years, and although we disagree on some things, the most honorable person you will ever be. And I am sure if Charlene wins this election, she will come up here and she'll sell homes and she'll do a great job. So this thing that realtors have this problem, they work really hard. I've learned that in the last couple months, having had to use one for a transaction. They work hard, and sometimes the payoff isn't good. You lose stuff, you work a lot, so I just want you all to know, everybody up here is trying to do the best they can. These two that are running from us, I got to know them a little bit along the way, they're honorable people. They've made some mistakes along the way, we make them sometimes, but everybody is trying to do the right thing here, so I wish you guys the best regardless of what happens tomorrow, both of you. I think you both ran good campaigns. I'm hoping we win again, because I think we have, you know, we put in a lot of years here to try to get it right, so... But one thing I can tell you tomorrow, the people will get it right. I've said this for, as long as I've sat here, when the masses go to the polls, they usually get it right. And, you know, win or lose, nobody has to hang their head tomorrow. You know, we all want Oviedo, and it should be one proud Oviedo. What happened here tonight, I've never really seen that in twelve years, but, you know, I can tell you that this is a good group of people, and all you realtors out there do a good job, so we'll just leave it at that. Thank you both for a good campaign. Both of you handled yourselves very well. I know we did. We tried the best we could do. Tomorrow will be a tough day for everybody, taking a nap, I'll tell you that, because it's a long day. But the people will get it right tomorrow. They really will. So, but you two should not have taken that abuse tonight, and I know in my heart who you two are, so let that go right over your head. And realtors, you're all good. So I'll just leave it at that, and on to bed and on to a good campaign tomorrow. All the best, everybody.
Great. Anything else for the good of the order? Mr. Cop, Mr. Groot?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Well, if I could chime in one last thing. On the cutting off of public comments, that just raised me the wrong way a little bit. If we could in the future, I don't know if there's consensus for it. I know there's some things being said that weren't the most pleasant to hear, but it doesn't do any harm to hear people out, so in the future, I'd be in favor of letting people complete their thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, can I, I don't want to argue with...
Yeah, the only thing...
I think it's important to say something, if, can I, just for the record...
Yeah, correct.
For the record, what I saw was the gentleman, I forgot his name, I saw him point his finger at you and act aggressive. In today's world, that cannot occur.